In compliance with Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920, in response to the ongoing COVID outbreak, the district will conduct the Board of Education's meeting as a teleconference. Given the health risks associated with COVID-19, the Newport Mesa Unified School District has decided not to open the boardroom to the public. Spanish interpretation will be available via the Zoom link. Welcome to our regular meeting of March 9th. Roll call, please, Rosie.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Trustee Barto.
Here.
Trustee Metoyer.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Crane. Trustee Wagen.
Here.
Trustee Ursula.
Here.
Mr. Lee Sung.
Here.
Community input on closed session agenda items only. Trustee Metoyer, would you read the statement, please?
Certainly. Speakers wishing to address the Board on special agenda topics have submitted the appropriate comment card on the district website by no later than 11:00 a.m. today, Tuesday, March 9, 2021. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
Thank you. There were six comment cards received for closed session, item 4C, and I'll now turn it over to Susan Fish, who will call on speakers in the queue. And Bob will let you into the room.
Mrs. Crane is trying to get in her login as she just texted me.
Thank you, President Yelsey. The first person we have listed to speak is Charlotte Zeremba. However, I do not see her listed in the queue. So our next speaker is Janine Marie Beshore. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Okay, this is Janine Beshore. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Dear Russell and Board of Trustees, it is nice to see that sports and performing arts are opening back up on our high school campuses and our student athletes finally have some sort of normalcy in their lives. With that being said, I was disappointed after I read the agenda for today's meeting and didn't see an agenda item discussing getting our secondary students back to school full-time this year. I was also very disappointed after reading your email from yesterday that elementary students can return this school year, but there was no mention of secondary. So can I ask why? Why can't secondary students return to school full-time this year? You stated in your email that some possible shifts have recently occurred. You mentioned that COVID cases are declining, teachers are getting vaccinated, and have some flexibility with distancing. Why do these positive shifts only apply to elementary students and not secondary? Please, please be transparent with us. We have over three months left in the school year. Our children, our students, need to get back to normal life. If Newport Mesa Unified School District waits until fall of 2021 to send our secondary students back full-time, it will be 17 months of secondary students not having a proper education. This is unacceptable. An interim solution might be to combine cohorts. My daughter attends Newport Harbor. On any given day, there are usually five to seven students attending classes. Why not combine the cohorts? And at least let the students who want to be on campus attend four days a week versus two. I am going to remain hopeful that positive decisions will be made soon and that every student in Newport Mesa Unified School District has the opportunity to attend school full-time this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlotte Zeremba is now joined. So we could go back and have her read her question, please. Unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Zeremba. I'm a teacher at Estancia High School. Last month, our administration determined that it's not safe for students to eat lunch indoors in the gym on a rainy day because there's too much risk of COVID transmission if hundreds of students eat lunch in the gym on a rainy day. We were told that for weeks when there is a greater than 50% chance of rain, oh, sorry, that's the bell, that can be predicted on a Tuesday through Friday in-person day, perhaps that day could be exchanged with our Monday Distance Learning Day in the hybrid schedule so that students would not lose one of their two in-person days per week. Twice in the past two weeks, there has been a greater than 50% chance of rain on Wednesday, and twice, Estancia High School has sought district approval to exchange the rainy Wednesday in-person day with our Distance Learning Monday. Both times, the district would not approve this request. Because of this, over 500 students in Cohort B had only one in-person day last week instead of two. So they had to stay home and have their in-person day via Zoom last Wednesday. Let's see, because it rained during lunch last Wednesday. By early morning last Friday, our school sought district approval to again exchange our Distance Learning Monday this week for tomorrow's in-person day because there was a 70% chance of rain tomorrow. And again, our school's request was not approved. So by the district, the schedule change could not be made. Why is the commitment to our students to have two in-person days per week not viewed as a top priority in the district? Can the district find a way to help balance student safety with each cohort having their two in-person days per week? Our principal has communicated to parents that we are committed to have our Cohort B have their two days of in-person school this week. Students have received a message that if the weather allows them to eat outside tomorrow, they'll have lunch outside. Keep in mind, Estancia High School has no outdoor dining pavilions. But if it rains during lunch tomorrow, students will have the option to either eat indoors with masks off in one of the two gyms. This is not best for safety. Or they'll have the option to forego lunch and safely sit in the commons with their mask on during lunch instead. If the district can help ensure that both cohorts can have their two in-person days when rain is foreseen to occur on one of them, and if an approval of a schedule change for that week could fix this, I know the students would greatly appreciate it. And they would know that their safety and their in-person days matter to decision-makers in this district. Thank you for your time considering this matter.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Witcher. I do not see in the queue, so we'll move on to Kevin Thompson. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Kevin Thompson. I have two students at CDM and one at East Bluff Elementary. My junior son was upset last week in regards to not being able to attend school full-time. It was apparent that students who elect to stay home are sharing work and learning less. The students in the B hybrid are at a disadvantage because the majority of the tests occur at the end of the week. Thus, the A and C cohorts are at home with additional resources. In addition, the in-person teaching time is reduced due to the test time occurring in that cohort. I also do not believe the school district should maintain a cloud campus once the school is open to full-day school. Many alternative school options are open to those not wish to be part of the on-campus experience. My question is related to the four-foot or six-foot distance. State guidelines have indicated that if if a good faith effort has been maintained by the superintendent and that a six-foot distance cannot be maintained, a four-foot absolute minimum would be allowed. Have we investigated going to a four-foot, both in elementary and in the secondary schools, what impact that would have? And is the primary reason our school is not able to get to class due to the six-foot slash four-foot minimum? Or is it due to the teachers not willing to work without a vaccination? That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danielle Wisnand. Sorry if I mispronounced that. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Danielle Wisnand, and I have a kindergartner, eighth grader, and a sophomore in Newport Mesa. And thank you for making a plan for the elementary schools to get back to full-time in-person learning. I have to ask the question, why can't this plan also be for middle and high schoolers? The kids are not learning, hiding behind computers. I ask that you join Cohort A and B and let the kids that want an in-person education be given that opportunity. The students who do not feel comfortable coming to school have been given a plan they are comfortable with. Why can't we give this to students who want an in-person education? Plenty of states and counties have made this happen. What is our plan? I am asking that you adopt a three-to-four-foot requirement rather than the six-foot distant requirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see, the final speaker card is from Tara Tong, who I do not locate in the queue. So President Yelsey, there are no more speakers in the queue.
Thank you, Susan. Before we move to closed session, I just wanted to say that Superintendent Lee Sung makes superintendent comments at our regular board meeting. I don't know if you want to address any of these now, or, okay, we'll wait. Okay, we will now move to closed session. The items are 4A, conference with legal counsel. We have one case. 4B, conference with legal counsel. 4C, threat to public services or facilities. 4D, conference with labor negotiator. 4E, public employee discipline dismissal release employment. 4F and G, public employee discipline dismissal release employment. Case number 202101HR and 202102HR. We will return to open session at 6:00 p.m. with readouts. All board members should now log out of the public webinar and into the closed session meeting. Thank you. In compliance with Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920, in response to the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the district will conduct the Board of Education's meeting as a teleconference. Given the health risks associated with COVID-19, the Newport Mesa Unified School District has decided not to open the boardroom to the public. Spanish interpretation will be available via the Zoom link. We're calling the meeting to order at 6:00 p.m. Before we begin, I have two readouts from closed session. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the resignation agreement and general release for number 202101HR. The roll call vote was filed. It was moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Anderson. The roll call vote was 7-0. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the resignation agreement and general release for number 202102HR. The motion was approved. But the motion was made by Trustee Metoyer, seconded by Trustee Barto. The roll call vote was 7-0. Okay, welcome, everyone, tonight. We will have opening ceremonies, which is a moment of reflection and pledge to the flag led by Trustee Anderson. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda. Does a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Metoyer, seconded by Trustee Barto. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto. Yes. Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Ursula.
Yes.
You got that, yes. Adoption of the amendments 2921 to 2321.
So moved.
Second.
Who moved it?
Trustee Crane.
Oh, okay. The sounds, I can't see, I can't hear when everybody's face is coming.
It echoed in.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Metoyer. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Ursula.
Yes.
With our student board member reports, the topic tonight, we're asked to report on what they've enjoyed most about being a student board member. And we will start with Bailey Bogard from Newport Harbor High School.
Hello, everyone. I am Bailey Bogard, representing Newport Harbor High School. I would have to say, after these two years of being school board rep, my favorite aspect of it is the ability I have gained to effectively communicate with my peers and learn from them in the process because before this position, I never really knew how to gain knowledgeable information from people in my community and at my school. And now I am really aware of the inner workings of a school district and the inner workings of a school and how important student beliefs about a school are when making change in a district. So.
I don't know that she heard you.
Elizabeth, I think you're on, is she on mute?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'd like to thank the school board for allowing me to represent the newly formed Cloud Campus as a student board member. I've benefited from the experience in many ways. I've learned about the inner workings of NMUSD, the proper rules of running a meeting, improved my public speaking abilities, and have learned to conduct a survey and analyze the results for presentation. Cloud Campus has benefited from the CSBA Conference and the SSAC meetings that I attended as a result of my position as a student board member. We discussed the mental health needs of students throughout the state at the conference and at the meetings. Those experiences encouraged me to discuss the topic with my ASB advisor and the class. Together as an ASB and with the help of the counselors of Cloud Campus, we have a mental health awareness week that is taking place this week, which has a great response. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity.
Next, we have Madeline McNamara from Back Bay High Schools.
Hi, I'm Madeline McNamara. I represent Back Bay High School. And the student board member position has been such a big opportunity that has taught me a bunch of different skills. I also got to participate in big decisions, which in turn taught me the behind-the-scenes of how our schools are run. The student board member position helped me with my life skills for future jobs or interviews or anything like that, such as learning how a meeting works and the correct procedure of that and working on my speaking skills and all of the reading and writing that goes into the meetings. But I would have to say, my favorite part about the position of a student board member is the impact that I bring to my fellow students, teachers, and principals at my school. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. Next is Troy Saboda from Cronin Del Mar High School.
Hello, my name is Troy Saboda from Cronin Del Mar. I mean, it's been quite a year, and I think a lot of major decisions have happened. And with that, a lot of students now, a lot more know like the role the board plays in our student life. Some of the things that I think are really useful with the position are, one, just having a platform to share opinions for those. I'm sorry. Yeah, so just sharing, being able to share our opinions for certain decisions. And then, secondly, what's really interesting is being able to talk to all the different student board members from the other schools and being able to hear some of their challenges that they face at their schools. We don't really get a lot of that when we are like in our own school. So that's a good experience.
Board members back in with us. It would be nice to have them experience this in person. Next, we have Luca Gorshfeely from Costa Mesa High School.
Hello, Superintendent Lee Sung, President Yelsey, trustees, and guests. Keeping my report on the shorter side of things, answering the question, for me, this whole student board representative position was more of an opportunity to learn about organizational skills, time management, and about taking people's opinions and about the inner workings of major organizations such as the school boards. I really enjoyed being a part of the community in a way that allows me to transfer students' opinions in my school to my district board while also learning about, obviously, organization and time management. And I also enjoyed being able to report in front of people as it taught me better communication skills and better public speaking skills and allowed me to become a more confident speaker. And I feel like the amount of benefits I gained from the program in terms of personal growth and school involvement was definitely a great one. And I'm really glad that I was able to participate in this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Luca. Paulina Vasquez from Early College High School.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here. I am Paulina Enriquez, and I am representing Early College High School. And I would just want to touch upon, just adding upon everything, everyone, what everyone else said. I really enjoyed being a student board member because not only did I learn about how the district works, I also got to kind of just get all the opinions from people in my school, which was another school that I had from just being an ASB. I just really, I'm really grateful for this opportunity because I can just, it was easier for me to connect with the people in my school, which I didn't connect with everybody, and I learned more about what they thought about issues such as going back to school and the hybrid learning model, which was really big in the beginning of this year. So yeah, that's basically the premise of how grateful I am for taking this opportunity. And I hope everybody else for next year thinks the same. So thank you.
Ever Jenny from Estancia High School.
What I have enjoyed most about being a student board member is the real change I get to be a part of in the community. I get to immerse myself deeper and deeper. Talking to students from all walks of life and not just hearing, but really listening to what they have to say has been really inspiring and incredible. It's allowed me to really grow as a person and dive deeper into what it means to really serve my community and my school. Getting to know my fellow student board members was really cool, too. All of this is a big process for us, but I'm glad that we're here, learning together. And although it's a lot of responsibility, it's a responsibility that I take on happily to have representing my community. And I really do recommend stepping up and becoming a student board member. You learn so much, not only technically, not only with the technical skills of speech and the inner workings of the student board, but also growing as a person and really getting, honing in on those listening skills to others. Overall, it was a really good experience, and I'm really grateful for it.
Thank you, Brittany. Unfortunately, we had some hearing problems in here. I don't know if they did it home. But for those of you who have not, are not aware of the student board member process, this is the first year we've had student board members in our district. We went through a lengthy application process, and we came up with some great additions this year. And we are so pleased to have all of them participate. They take this job very seriously, and they've contributed quite a bit. I know as vice president, I worked with them, and Trustee Barto is now working with them. And we really appreciate all the effort you've put into this. And with that, also, just want everyone to be aware, any students who may be listening or parents who want to tell their children, we are getting ready to go through the application process for our next year's student board members. So we look forward to continuing this program. Thank you all very much. And next, we will have the Harbor Council PTA report.
Good evening, Superintendent Lee Sung, President Yelsey, trustees, and guests. All of our schools right now are getting their nominating committees together and holding their elections for the officers for next year. We are really grateful to get that email saying that we were getting closer to getting everybody back to school. And hopefully, that will help with some of our issues on getting our people to sign up and volunteer. So thank you for that. Harbor Council had their elections last week, and we have me as president again. We have EVP Cynthia Strassman, Treasurer Vicky Waldo, Secretary Melissa Rakestraw, Auditor Lauren Malmester, Historian Carrie Oliver. Membership is Heidi Beth, Programs Kathleen Messinas. And our ledge position is open. So we're looking currently to fill that position. And we look forward, obviously, to working again with you guys next year. So since we last met, we had the Virtual Sacramento Safari on February 22nd and 23rd. They were being virtual. We had half-day sessions. Monday was in the morning, and we had four speakers. We had California State PTA President and Ledge VP speak to us on the importance of PTA and being involved with legislation and advocacy for kids. We also heard from Kevin Gordon from Capital Advisors and Kenneth Capan from the Legislative Analyst Office. Hearing from them, you get basically just the facts, no political lean to their topic. So that was very interesting. On Tuesday, we were in the afternoon, and we heard from Patrick O'Donnell, the Assembly Education Chair. We heard from Connie Laba, the Senate Education Chair. And then we heard from Sharon Quirk Silva, who is an Assembly Chair for a new program for arts, entertainment, sports, tourism, and internet media. She suggested that we write letters to request that museums start reopening. They feel that they can open with, you know, quantity of people control, distancing, and all the safety measures, and that, obviously, people getting out and enjoying those venues would be very important, in addition to, of course, the Disneyland's and Knott's Berry Farms. Our three key messages for SAC Safari were return to in-person learning, education funding, and reminding everyone in Sacramento that Proposition 98 is not a floor. It is not the ceiling, it is the floor. And the funding needs to be above what they're saying our top should be. And then the third was mental health. We had a follow-up visit on Monday, and that was meeting with, well, the two that I went to, was meeting with Assemblywoman Codi Petrie-Norris and Senator Dave Mann. And he listened to all our concerns on those three key messages. And we were led at Sacramento Safari this year by our own Suzanne Gauntlet, formerly of Harbor Council PTA, who is now the chairman of Sacramento Safari at Fourth District PTA. So the other thing I wanted to remind anybody who's interested, on March 25th, is the Fourth District Administrator's Dinner. Normally, we have this in-person, and this year, it's going to have to be virtual. But those of you who have attended in the past, it's always very nice to see your cohorts and our PTA people. So if anyone is interested, you're welcome to join. The only thing you have to do is make sure you are a PTA member. But you're more than welcome to join into the virtual Fourth District Admin Dinner on the 25th. If you want details, just let me know, and I'll be glad to get it to you. And as always, don't forget, it's not too late to join the PTA. Go to jointotum.com, and you can join most of our PTAs. Thank you for your time.
And now, we will have our association presidents highlight their activities. Is Tamara Fairbanks here?
Yes, here, I'm here. Good evening, trustees, honored guests. This week is Parent Conference Week for our elementary schools. It's an opportunity for teachers to discuss student achievement, academic supports, and hold strategic and focused conversations about each child. Throughout this year, teachers had to dispel misinformation, stop rumors, and remind parents we are, in fact, conducting in-person instruction, unlike many districts in the news who have not reopened for live instruction. Our teachers were looking forward to having conversations with parents centered on what students are being taught and student progress, not the politics of distance learning versus in-person instruction. This opportunity was hijacked yesterday. At 4:47 p.m., NMUSD sent out an email that shifted the course of our At four forty-seven PM, NMUSD sent out an email that shifted the course of our parent conferences away from the students to politics. This communication from the superintendent informed parents that the district is currently considering increasing in-person instruction at our elementary schools. Teachers were bombarded with questions and emails about what increased instruction would look like. There were questions about social distancing, lunch, recess and other activities involving student groups and shared materials. Parents were also concerned about adjustments that they would have to make with their employers related to drop off and pickup times. Clearly, teachers were caught off guard and were unable to give meaningful responses to parents. As they had only received the same message moments before. Some teachers were informed of the superintendent's message during their evening conferences. NMUSD, you have placed a great amount of stress on your employees. You have robbed them of the opportunity to have student-focused conversations. You have forced our principals to scramble to do damage control, knowing the plan has not been developed as of yet. You have forgotten the sacrifices that all of our employees have made in order to teach during some of the scariest and deadliest surges. You did this to save face at the expense of your employees. Your employees deserve better than this. We deserve an employer who actually creates plans before announcing them to the public. We deserve an employer who looks at all of the logistical and operational details before. Details to make our work systematically happen. We deserve an employer who provides us the details prior to making announcements to the public. We deserve an employer who values our rapport with parents and trusts us enough to communicate the plan. We deserve better.
Thank you, Tamara. I just have to say that I've heard from many teachers in the past day who are very excited about coming back. So. Um, I hope they can make these adjustments. Uh, next we have Pam Saunders.
Good evening, President Yelsey, Board, Superintendent Lee Sung, Cabinet and guests. Thank you for this opportunity from CSEA. First and foremost, we'd like to thank all our classified employees throughout our district. We are very grateful to every classified employee. For doing their part and all their hard work. We are still very concerned about the safety of all students and staff at schools and work sites. With the district's talk of returning elementary in the spring and secondary in the fall with full safety measures in place. CSEA wants to be part of the proactive planning process to ensure that classified members' needs and concerns are addressed prior to the opening. For the continuity of instruction and to provide peace of mind and safety for our employees. We ask the district to provide all staff and students the opportunity be, to be vaccinated before a change in our educational model is considered. There is a continued impact to our district workforce. This creates an unsafe environment for students as the remaining staff is overworked, stressed and scared. We look forward to collaborating and addressing the items brought up for negotiations and mutually beneficial agreement. And a mutually beneficial agreement. We, we'd like to remind everyone. We'd like to remind everyone to continue to mask and social distance. Again, thank you for this opportunity. CSEA Chapter eighteen.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Next we have community input on agendized items. Trustee Matwaye.
Speakers wishing to address the board on special agenda topics have submitted the appropriate comment card on the district website. By no later than eleven AM today, Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one. Comments on agenda items are a list, are limited to three minutes per comment, up to twenty minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
Thank you. There were two comment cards received on agendized items. Uh, one was for consent, one was for discussion action, and we will take these comments as we reach those agenda items. So we'll move on now to item thirteen, superintendent's comments.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Um, so I want to share four items uh, tonight. Uh, the first one is I received the uh, weekly COVID numbers for um, our county. And I'm pleased to report that again, they steadily decline. In fact, our new case rate has now dipped below uh, the seven point six level that it was at last week. It's now down to six point zero. Which puts that measure in the uh, red tier. Our positivity rate also dropped, continued to drop and it's now at three point two, which is also, is actually in the orange uh, level. So that's good news, great news for all of us. Uh, we need to continue doing uh, all the protocols and measures. Because it's working. It's moving down. And uh, and that's great news in terms of opening and moving back to normalcy. Uh, not only here in our schools, but, but throughout our, our county and our communities. The next positive area is uh, the progress being made on vaccines. And I know many of us have talked to people and maybe had our own experiences with getting the vaccine. Since March first, when our um, tier one B um. Uh, or phase one B began, all educators became eligible. There was an immediate uh. You know, positive energy in terms of let's get those appointments going. And uh, what's been great is hearing the stories of, of folks. Uh, that not only is it the education pods that are dedicated educators that are open and we've had many of our employees that. Have gotten appointments and vaccines there, but also our own healthcare providers. Like uh, I heard many people went to Kaiser, whether they were Kaiser members or not, they were able to get the vaccine there. And then also taking advantage of other options like CVS and Walgreens and Rite Aid. And all of them have to give the vaccines to educators and there is a priority. Uh, for vaccinations for educators. So all of that is great. And little by little, we will get there and more and more the vaccine supply will increase. So that's very encouraging. So these two factors, the fact that our numbers and COVID rates are declining. Uh, the vaccine slowly being rolled out to our employees caused us to make a very big announcement um, yesterday. Uh, which was the memo that I did send out to our staff and message sent out to our parents. Which is aligned to the direction and the interests of this board. This makes it very clear to me and to our, our staff here. That we want our kids back. We want our kids back as much as possible, as soon as possible. And keeping them safe and, and our staff safe at the same time. And so yesterday's announcement, I was very excited to deliver. And that is that we are going to be working very hard. We're working on our plans. Uh, to get our elementary students back full day after spring break. And, and uh, we are working on the details. There are a lot of details that have not been communicated in my memo. This was just to indicate what we're planning. We're going to be working closely with our principals. Who will be working closely with their teachers. We will be working with uh, our union leaders. There's a lot of details and a lot of work to make that happen. So I want to get to the point where I can confirm that. And give a start date and announce that to everybody. But there are a lot of details that still have to be worked out. The second part is what about secondary schools? What about secondary schools? And I'm going to share with you that the, there's. Uh, challenges with secondary. But I want everybody to know, even though I, I could not commit to that now, that is something that we will continue to look at, to bring all of our kids back. And I know that's an interest of the board, to get all of our kids, including our secondary back. But right now, we want to focus on elementary, uh, but we will definitely work to get uh, secondary as much back as possible. And then the fall, now we get to the fall. And there's been a lot of emails. We've received a lot of question about what's going to happen in the fall. And in that message that I sent yesterday is our full commitment to bring all of our students back TK twelve. Full day in the fall. And uh, this allows us to start the planning now to make that happen. And of course, anything short of the state telling us, we absolutely can't do it, our commitment is full to get all of our students back uh, in person. Uh, all, every day of the week. Okay? And so, so there's a lot of work that staff has to do. We're up to the challenge because this is the right thing to do is to get our kids back to school in person. And the last thing I want to mention is uh, student calendar. Uh, we've been receiving a lot of questions about. When does the new school year begin in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two? Now, we do know, uh, because this is part of the negotiated agreement, that the teachers are going to be returning on August sixteen. So that's a teacher return date is August sixteen. So we have that date. What we don't have yet confirmed is the student calendar. And that goes through a process. We have a, a very large representative calendar committee that has been meeting. They've met a couple of times already. They're scheduled to meet again this week. And we really are pushing to get that decision finalized so that we can communicate it to everybody. And I just want to say that we recognize that the calendar is so critically important for all of us, our own personal lives, our family lives. And we plan everything around those, those dates and those calendars. So just want you to know, we're working on it. There is a process and we hope to announce that uh, very soon. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And next we have a report on an exciting uh, new development that we've recently heard about, the summer program planning. Hmm, Mr. Drake.
Thank you, President Yelsey, uh, trustees, Superintendent Lee Sung. Uh, it is exciting to be able to share with you uh, some plans that are coming together for our summer programs. Uh, you were able to uh, spend a significant amount of time a few weeks ago with our principals. Uh, hearing both the, the successes and frankly, the challenges that they've faced over the last year uh, with the pandemic. Uh, you know, in, in, in front of them and uh, in, in still moving forward with teaching and learning. Uh, one of the things that we heard loud and clear, at least that I heard loud and clear from many principals is. Really some of the benefits that they've found in that two and a half hour uninterrupted amount of time that they have had with kids. Uh, that they found some success there. Uh, in the same sense, we also know that that two and a half hours is probably not enough for all of our students. And it will have some that will need some more. Um, a, a, a natural place to look for that time is summer, uh, and we have done that. And as, as you also know. Um, a few weeks, I think just over a month ago, I think we celebrated her uh, month anniversary as our principal on special assignment. Dr. Hogard has taken on the challenge of putting our summer programs together, kindergarten through twelfth grade. And has done uh, an incredible job at this point. And in a, in a minute here, I'll have her share, you know, an update report on how things are shaping up. One of the things I do want to just kind of help frame the conversation. Is uh, when we think about summer school, we think, yeah, I'll have a few teachers show up, some kids show up and we've got summer school. Um, it is much, much more complex than that. Uh, especially and in my eleven years in the district, and I know Lori's been here even longer than that. Um, we have never tried to run uh, as robust a summer program as we are going to be running this summer. Um, so that complicates things even a little bit more. It is really like opening eight brand new schools over the summer and staffing those and all of those pieces. This summer program will and already has touched every single department. Um, in our district and will continue to do so. So it is very complicated and complex. Uh, and Lori's done a great job to this point, bringing all those pieces together, uh, to share with you some of this information tonight. The other piece uh, of this equation as well is um, uh, the, the programs are evolving. And they're evolving, when I say programs, elementary and secondary are evolving at different paces. Um, and so you're going to hear um, quite a bit about uh, uh, elementary uh, this evening. Um, but secondary is not far behind. Um, but, but most of this evening um, will be an update on, on elementary. Uh, with, with some time provided uh, for secondary as well. Um, and so just want to kind of frame the conversation in that, that this has been a huge challenge. Um, and I want to turn it on over to Dr. Hogard at this point to share the update.
Okay. Are you able to see my screen? Yes, perfect. Good evening, President Yelsey, trustees, Superintendent Lee Sung, Cabinet Staff and Community. I'm here this evening to provide you with an update on our work to prepare for summer programs. In the study session two weeks ago, each principal shared about the status of student learning and social emotional development since the onset of the pandemic. And the ways that we're responding as a school system to meet the needs of our students. I'm going to share about the systematic planning process that is underway to provide robust summer programming for our students. While summer is an opportune time to accelerate student learning, the research on learning loss is clear that there isn't one magic fix. It's not about one short-term program, but it's about the collective impact of quality instruction and strategic supports over time. So while the presentation this evening is focused specifically on summer program development. I want to share that our summer planning in education services is part of a proactive process. To adapt and refine our instructional systems with a long-term focus on moving all students forward in their learning. In February, we administered a district-wide summer learning survey to parents and teachers of our elementary students. The parent survey was designed to identify interest in program participation. As well as gain insight into parent priorities for summer program content. The teacher survey was designed to gain input on student needs and targeted focus areas. As well as identify teachers interested in possibly teaching in the summer program. We had more than twenty-three hundred responses to the parent survey. With a high percentage of responses indicating they're interested in their child participating in a district summer program. The survey results indicate that top priorities of our parents are English Language Arts. Followed by enrichment, followed by math and social experiences. More than three hundred of our elementary teachers responded to the survey. The teacher's survey results indicate that top priorities of our teachers are also English Language Arts. Followed by math, followed by social experiences. With a focus on building strong readiness skills for grade level content in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The narrative comments I want to mention submitted by our teachers were really thoughtful and insightful. The input of our teachers about what should be addressed in a summer program is a true testament to their dedication to student learning and wellbeing. A few patterns that emerged as we analyzed the narrative responses. Include an interest for summer programming to be offered in person as well as some online option. And that summer school experiences provide social opportunities, help our students create and foster friendships. And include enrichment opportunities that are both hands-on and engaging. So this evening, I'm going to provide you with an overview of the planned elementary summer program model. And then address each of the three program offerings that are under development. The elementary program that we're developing consists of three program offerings. These reflect guidance from the research on learning loss and summer learning, as well as the input of the educators and families throughout our community. All three of these offerings include experiences that promote learning and foster social emotional development. One of the words that came up a lot in the narrative comments from both the families and the teachers, it's the word friend and friendships. And that's what we're aiming for in each of our offerings. Each of the offerings is unique in terms of the context, whether it's in-person or online. The duration and the specific content of the student experiences. We're planning with an agile mindset, knowing that the health and safety guidelines that we are going to be required to follow this summer. Are still unknown at this time. So I'll walk you through the three offerings. Our first offering is the in-person summer session. We're planning a four-week instructional program focusing on English Language Arts, English Language Development and Mathematics. With instruction anchored in priority grade level content to build strong readiness skills for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The second offering is an in-person enrichment camp. And the third offering is an online summer learning challenge. And now I'll walk you through each one. Our in-person summer session is planned for four weeks with a four-hour day focused on core academic instruction. As well as social emotional learning and fostering positive social interactions for our students. We identified nine sites across the four zones to host the in-person summer session. These nine sites were identified to one, provide locations throughout our district. With more programming hosted at Title One sites based on the higher levels of projected need based on our student assessment data. In this process, we also considered how to best support student transportation and accommodate scheduled summer facility maintenance. Our goal is to provide this offering to as many students as possible with priority to students who demonstrate academic need for this programming. The in-person enrichment camp is planned for two weeks and is projected to be a half-day offering within each zone. We're currently in the process of identifying the specific program focus areas and are working with our talented elementary specialist team. To plan for enrichment experiences that will provide our students with choices. That are aligned to their interests and maximize hands-on engaging experiences. While the enrichment camps are not planned to be an intensive academic experience. While the enrichment camps are not planned to be an intensive academic experience, there's a lot of learning that's fostered within enrichment. High-quality enrichment experiences promote the development of language and literacy skills, content knowledge and social skills. And we're really excited to be able to offer this this summer. Our online summer learning challenge. We're working with Dr. Mishney and the incredible ed tech team to launch the online summer learning challenge, which will span eight weeks of the summer. We plan to provide grade-level learning activities that are self-paced within a motivating online format. It will prompt students to complete each learning activity before moving on to the next. We plan to use Aludo as a tool to craft this experience for our students. In order to provide support for students participating in the online summer learning challenge, we plan to provide grade-level weekly Zoom sessions that are available to students. The teacher on Zoom can provide targeted support based on student questions and the analysis of patterns in student work submitted that week. Online programming addresses the interests of our families in the community who are choosing to have their students learn from home at the current time. This online option also provides flexibility for families whose schedules don't allow for the in-person programs, families who may be traveling or participating in the other high-quality programs in our community like junior lifeguards, sports teams and other community-based activities. The online summer learning challenge is being designed to accommodate all students who wish to participate. So I'd like to highlight a few of our next steps as we prepare. One is our design teams. We're launching design teams to craft the more detailed plans for daily instruction and student experiences. For example, our instructional design team for the in-person summer session will be creating the daily instructional guide for teachers for each day of summer session. The online design team will work with our ed tech team to determine the specific activities our students will complete for the online summer learning challenge. Our elementary specialists are key to our enrichment camp planning and we're also engaging with community partners in this work. The hiring process has been a significant focus. As you can imagine, this scope of summer programming will require a considerable number of staff. We've already begun the process with our human resources department to calculate staffing needs and draft posting materials. The parent outreach and application process is important in our planning and we've already begun to plan for this with our school community facilitators and our principals. They've been engaging in some planning for coordinated parent outreach and ways to inform and connect our parents with summer program offerings. I'm also sharing with you this evening a brief update on our planning process for secondary summer programs as our team is working closely with the secondary principals to prepare for a robust set of programs for both middle and high school students. In addition to our annual secondary summer programming, including Summer Language Academy, the district online courses and traditional credit recovery offerings, sites are planning extended learning academies based on student needs. At the high school level, we're in the process of finalizing the projected needs for credit recovery and promoting student readiness for their coursework in the 2122 school year. At the middle school level, we're working with principals to develop instructional programming to support students as they transition into a new school year, especially in the area of mathematics. We look forward to providing you an update on our secondary programs in coming weeks. The education services team is working diligently to move this planning process forward in a proactive and systematic way with the goal of maximizing our impact on student learning this summer. So I want to leave you with three things that I hope stood out to you in hearing about our plans for summer 2021. One is expanding offerings. As Mr. Drake had mentioned, this is not a typical summer plan for our school district. The level of programming I described this evening reflects a significant increase in services to our students during summer months. The second is student-centered. Our commitment in this process is to build our summer systems around what our student needs are and leverage these investments to set students up for success in the coming school year. The third is coordinated efforts. The efforts to provide this level of programming described is requiring extensive coordination across departments. And I want to recognize the sincere dedication of each department from the onset of this planning process. Every department in our district, as well as the principals, are highly committed to the summer planning process, which really speaks to their unwavering commitment to student success as they engage in this extensive work that's required to prepare for summer, while also in the midst of providing school year services under the ever-changing conditions posed by the pandemic. So I thank you for your support of our summer programs and we look forward to providing you with additional updates over the coming weeks.
Thank you, Lori. That I think we're all really excited about this program. And I know a lot of people out there are listening. Parents will be very pleased that we're offering this and it seems like we have something for everyone who needs it and more. Mr. Drake, would you like to comment? Are there questions?
Yes. Dr. Hogard or Mr. Drake? Is it, is the summer online learning challenge? That's open to students even if they are already enrolled in the in-person program? So a child could be enrolled in both programs simultaneously should their parents desire that?
Yes.
That is my understanding correct, Dr. Hogard? That they can? And when they conclude, those participating in the four-week program could also join at the end of the four weeks if they wanted to.
Perfect. Thank you so much. The amount of work that has gone into this, so well planned.
Trustee Wagen.
You spoke about the middle school bridge. Is there the similar bridge from sixth grade into middle school?
Yes. So the middle school bridge programming that we're planning is earmarked for our sixth graders into seventh as well as seventh into eighth. So supporting those transitions with the main programming being for our sixth graders into seventh, knowing that that's a critical transition year. And our elementary programming is designed so that our sixth graders that are in need of that academic support will be prioritized to remain in our elementary program for the beginning of the summer when we're offering our in-person summer session before we transition them to middle school bridge to be welcomed and prepped by their incoming middle school.
I don't see any more hands.
I just wanted to say thank you very much, Dr. Hogard. This is very well done and I just thank you for the comprehensive and really strategic approach that you took. I'm really looking forward to it and I think it's great for students. I was wondering too, for the middle school or the secondary component, do we have a date just so people can try and get that on their calendars as it does happen? Are we thinking maybe like at the next board meeting, we'll have a similar report? Or what do you anticipate the timeline for that, please?
We are still in the planning process, but we are working diligently and swiftly and trying to connect all the dots so that the program is well-coordinated and smooth because we are serving more students with more programming than ever before. So as you know, we plan to have updates for you in coming weeks.
I have one question.
Trustee Barto.
Thank you so much. This looks so, I love the whole systematic approach. It's so exciting. I wanted to ask about the secondary and you're probably still working on it. Is this all through secondary? So you'd have seven through 12 would all have the opportunity to attend a summer program?
We are still in the planning process for secondary, so we don't have all the details for you this evening. We look forward to bringing them to you.
Any further questions? Dr. Hogard, thank you very much for joining us tonight and Mr. Drake for working with her to develop this. We're all very excited.
Thank you.
We'll now move to item 15, consent calendar. As I said before, there was one comment card received on 15A4. And now Susan Fish, could you please pull that person up on Zoom?
Thank you, Mrs. Yelsey. The comment card is from Julie Ossenbein, who does not appear to be in attendance. So I will, there are no others in the queue.
So we move to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Moved by trustee Metoye, seconded by trustee Barto. It's a roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
16 will be a public hearing and an action calendar. And I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Olson.
Thank you very much. Good evening. The next few items on the agenda reflects the sunshining process for the 2122 negotiations with both of our bargaining unit members. So the process for each document begins with a public hearing, followed by acceptance or approval of the proposals by the board. So first up will be CSEA's initial proposal for re-opener negotiations, followed by the district's initial proposal to CSEA. And the second, then it will be NMFT's initial proposal to the district for a successor agreement, followed by the district's proposal to NMFT. And following board action tonight, negotiation dates will be scheduled. And we look forward and thank both all of the teams and team members in advance for the commitment and the efforts that go into these processes, which we know takes a lot. So we look forward to those discussions.
You made that sound so easy. I'm going to try to go through this and cover it all. Okay, 16A is a public hearing of the California School Employees Association, Chapter 18, Initial Proposal for Contract Reopeners to the Newport-Mason Unified School District for Negotiations Commencing 2021. The public hearing is now open at 6:50 PM. There were no speaker cards submitted for comments, so the public hearing is now closed at 6:50 PM. Item 16B, Receive California School Employees Association, Chapter 18, Initial Proposal for Contract Reopeners to Newport-Mason Unified School District for Negotiations Commencing 2021. I need a motion for approval.
I move to receive the California School Employees Association Initial Proposal for Contract Reopeners.
I'll second.
Crane.
It was moved by trustee Barto, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Item 16C, Public Hearing of the Newport-Mason Unified School District's Initial Proposal for Contract Reopeners to the California School Employees Association, Chapter 18, for Negotiations Commencing 2021. The public hearing is now open at 6:51. And there are no speaker cards submitted for these comments. So the public hearing is now closed at 6:51.
The fastest we've ever done this.
I know. Item 16D, Approve Newport-Mason Unified School District's Initial Proposal for Contract Reopeners to the California School Employees Association, Chapter 18 of the negotiations commencing 2021. Roll call vote.
We have to move in second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Who seconded?
Trustee Barto.
It was moved by trustee Metoye, seconded by trustee Barto. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
16E, Public Hearing of the Newport-Mason Federation of Teachers, Initial Proposal for Successor Agreement to the Newport-Mason Unified School District for Negotiations Commencing 2021. The public hearing is now open at 6:52. There were no speaker cards submitted for comments. The public hearing is now closed at 6:52. Item 16F, Receive Newport-Mason Federation of Teachers, Initial Proposal for Successor Agreement to the Newport-Mason Unified School District for Negotiations Commencing 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Metoye. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
16G, Public Hearing of the Newport-Mason Unified School District's Initial Proposal for Successor Agreement to the Newport-Mason Federation of Teachers for Negotiations Commencing 2021. The public hearing is now open at 6:53. There were no speaker cards submitted for the comments. The public hearing is now closed at 6:53. And 16H, Approve Newport-Mason Unified School District's Initial Proposal for Successor Agreement to the Newport-Mason Federation of Teachers for Negotiations Commencing 2021. Have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by
Second.
Moved by trustee Wagen, seconded by trustee Metoye. Roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Metoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Ursaylu?
Yes.
Okay, I hope everyone followed that closely. We'll now move on to discussion action calendar. 17A is approve the 2021 second interim report of the district's financial status. And I know that Mr. Trader has been hard at work, so welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here with you tonight. We just hold the alt key down, right? Remains control. Which one is it, Bob?
Alt tab.
Is it alt?
Alt and then tab.
Tab. There we go. Well, let's talk about second interim and what it is. It's required by law. Education Code 42130 and AB 2756 require that we come to you twice a year to provide you with an interim report. And the certification addresses the district's ability to meet its financial obligations for this year and the next two years. And so with that, then there's, this takes all the activity from first interim and then brings it up through second interim. So tonight you're seeing the changes that we made from first to second interim. And we try to spell that out for you tonight. So then we usually like to freshen up the numbers for the governor's new year budget. But this year, we did not do that because of all the uncertainty around what's been happening. And we've noticed that there's been, you know, significant changes from when the governors come out with things. For example, last year, complete change-up. So we've decided to be a little more cautious about this. So this second interim does not assume any of the new year budget proposals for the year 2122 in our multi-years. We are going to wait and let the things settle down a little bit. And so get ready, let's fasten your seat belts. We're about ready to go into the galaxy of numbers here. Let's talk about his 2122 budget highlights. And so state is in a fiscal favorable position. They've found themselves with a $15 billion surplus, which is wonderful. It's absolutely terrific news and it'll be helpful for us. And so as a result, the governor has proposed an expanded learning grant, which is again, going to be very helpful for us. That's going to be about $12 million. And 85% of that needs to go to in-person instruction. 15% needs to go to distance learning. The board needs to adopt a plan by June 1 and we will get that plan to you. And it allows for increasing instructional time, tutoring, educator training. It allows for resources for health, counseling, nutrition services, before and after-school programs. And 10% must go to hiring para-professionals. So that's kind of a sketch of what that is, and it's going to be very helpful. And then he's also, the governor's also proposed in-person instruction grants. And that could bring about six million to the district. And that would be us committing to, to teaching in cohorts and, and opening school according to the different colored tiers. And one thing that's good about this, it does not require asymptomatic testing if we are in the red, orange, or yellow tiers, which is really good news. And the money can be used for pretty much, it's fairly unrestricted. It can be used for cleaning, PPE, ventilation, social, mental health, salaries, these kinds of things. So it's a, this is really good news and going to be helpful to us. So let's talk about some of the budget revisions. You're going to notice here that the numbers are misbehaving a little bit. It's not normal, normally what you see. We're seeing a little bit more variability in the numbers only because of things have changed so much. It seems to change every day. Oh my goodness, in large and in fairly substantial ways. So on the unrestricted side, we, the revenue decreased by about three and a half million. A large part of that is about $3 million for a federal revenue assumption correction. And then we lowered our unsecured property tax by about $200,000. And that's because commercial, commercially, as you're seeing around the area with especially commercial properties. A lot of that stuff is being reassessed downward, and so we're seeing, we're noticing that in our unsecured side. However, the, the secured property taxes are, are looking fairly robust. And then we also lowered home-to-school transportation revenue only because we don't have as many riders as we normally do, or as we anticipated. And then on the restricted side, revenue actually increased for, there were some federal programs that increased. Lottery actually went down a little bit, and we had about $150,000 of community support. So what that looks like at June adoptions, there's, there's where we're at. First interim, we come up quite a bit. Second interim, we're down slightly. And then let's talk about expense. Expense is lower, and that, again, that's impacted by uncertainty. So when we look at unrestricted expense, it, it was reduced by about $3 million. Staffing was lower by about 1.8, and non-staffing was higher by about 1.2. Sorry, that math doesn't work. They're both lower, excuse me. Non-staffing is lower by 1.2. On the restricted side, the expense side, that decreased by about 194,000. Staffing was lower by about 1.3 million, and non-staffing was higher by about 1.1 million. So when you look at that, June adoption, there's where we're at. We come up quite a bit at first interim and then slightly down at second interim.
Do you want us to wait with our questions?
Do you want? Any, anytime.
Do you want to, can you take questions as we're going along?
Okay, I, I feel like we've hired so many people that it just doesn't seem how our staffing is lower.
Yes. That's a great question. You're right, and we have. And that's no reflection of, that we haven't, because we have. It's a reflection of our assumption that we made at first interim. We thought we were going to be, we just didn't know what we could do in that regard. And so we really, to provide as much flexibility as possible, we put a lot in there.
Oh.
And so we're, we're adjusting backwards a little bit.
Got it. Okay, so it's not like it's lower than last year. It's lower than we thought we would have at first interim.
Correct.
Okay.
We've still gone up quite a bit.
There's a lot more. Thank you so much.
Question as well. For the home-to-school transportation, I am wondering about that. I feel like it's something, it wasn't necessarily that ridership went down. It's that we eliminated a lot of the roots and how many kids could ride. So that actually reminded me where, if we can maybe in the next week or two, have a discussion again about increasing the ridership and thinking that through. Because I know it's been really challenging for a lot of families.
Could you move your mic?
Thank you.
Do you want me to speak louder into it?
No, just aim it right to your mouth, and I'm good.
Okay. I'm, I'm concerned that we still have not followed up necessarily on the home-to-school transportation as we're thinking through the next steps for opening up our schools. So I just would love more information as to what we're thinking about that. Thank you.
Transportation is wonky.
I would guess that if we're going to start in person after spring break, that transportation will probably kick back up.
All right. I just want to make sure we have a plan, and it's communicated well to our families.
Yeah, I just want to say I've made the notation, but I want to make sure Jeff continues on with his presentation.
So other financing uses, increase somewhat, transfers out decreased. So that transfers from the general fund to Fund 17 decreased by about 381,000. And then support for our restricted programs increased by 1.1 million. And this includes a increased support for routine restricted maintenance and home-to-school transportation. And so when you look at those things, there's our transfers out in encroachment and total at June adoption. Here we are at first interim with a large jump in transfers out. And that was to Fund 17, to the risk management account. And then encroachment up slightly at first interim total there. And then at June adoption, we're down just a little bit, or up, up just a little bit, mainly due to the increased support for our restricted programs. So let's look at ending fund balance. You'll see unrestricted ending fund balance decreased by 1.3 million, and restricted ending fund balance increased by about one and a half million. So we look at June adoption, there you are, first interim and second interim. Slightly, slightly down a little bit. So let's talk about COVID funding. We've received a number of revenue streams associated with COVID funding. And the first one is the learning loss mitigation chrono relief. We received 9.3 million for that, and that's, that spending is due by May of this year. And we used a lot of things on this to, mainly for certificated and classified support, cloud campus, hourly support, subs, communication stipends, software licensing devices, hotspots, those kinds of things. Here we go. Sorry. Let's try this again. And then for ESER, the Elementary Secondary Emergency Relief Fund. That's due September of 2022. And we are scheduled, we've already used a lot of that money for certificate staffing, classified support, supplies, security. We, we had security at, a lot of our sites were vacant at the very beginning of this, and so we had some security to make sure that the sites would not be vandalized.
That's right. I just said, oh, that's right. I forgot. We did.
And then we have learning loss mitigation, Prop 98, one and a half, 1.6 million. That's due June of this year. And that's going to be mainly used for devices, hotspots, and air purifiers. And then we've got learning loss mitigation, the gear fund. And we're looking at that. That's mainly focused on social, emotional health. And so you'll see there's staffing associated with counselors and psychologists and school community facilitators. And then SB 117, the state money, and that all went for nutrition services support. And so let's take a look here at the multi-year.
If we can go back to one side.
Oh, sure, you bet.
Thank you. I had a question about the learning loss mitigation fund. I'm glad that we're using a majority of it, according to my math, which may be inaccurate, not my strongest subject. But it looks like we have a little bit over half a million left in the learning loss mitigation that we need to use by May 31st. Is there a plan for how we are going to use that to not leave any money on the table?
And we're talking about the gear program?
The, the very first block.
Oh, the very first.
Learning loss mitigation.
Oh, yes. Well, we are using, let's see, let's do the math, 3.1 million in certificate and classified staffing. We've got 588,000 in communication stipends, 503,000 in software licensing, 4.3 million in devices and hotspots, and 82,000 in nutrition services, insulated carriers.
Yes, it looks like we have around 700,000 left. So I'm just wondering, I mean, that's, that's not a small amount to sneeze at. So I'm just wondering if we have a plan to use every penny of that before May 31st.
It's all committed, believe me.
Did you, did you, when you gave us the, those wonderful numbers, were you projecting out through what we have to pay that certificating classified staff through May and through June? Sometimes that sucks up the money if it hasn't been spent already. I just am curious, too.
I'm just wondering if it, like, it's zeroed out, you know, if we have some money that is left, and I just wanted to make sure we use it all.
I'm sorry if the, if the math doesn't work there, but I can tell you, it is all zeroed out. Oh my goodness. I'll get back to you and let you know that, where, where that's at.
Great, thank you.
It's actually oversubscribed right now. We have some charges out.
Okay.
Some other places. All right, and then, so let's look at the multi-year. So you look at the multi-year, we've built up reserves to meet the demands of COVID-19. You can see here in 1819, going into 1920, we were still looking at air conditioning, those kinds of things. But the, the green line was above the red line, which is a good thing, right? And then we go into 2021, here we are at second interim. We're, we've got the pedal to the metal. Red line's above the green line a little bit there. We straightened that out here in 2122, and then it goes back that way. So we got some time to work on that. We have an expense profile that is going to challenge us in the future. And we'll, we'll fix that as, as we get, as we, as we move forward. These lines here, obviously, we want to see the green line above the red line, but they go back and forth a little bit. That's okay. If you see the red line above the green line for a consistent period of time, that would be the time to, to ask me some questions. So with that, then, let's let's talk about pension costs. Pension costs remain a challenge. 2223, if you look there in the shaded area, that's going to be a challenging year. We're dealing with a pension spike in that year on both, both plans. And so in your policy areas, when you're talking with the fellow electeds at the state level, this is a real concern. And we hope that the governor will help us out in this regard. 2223 is going to be a challenge. And so then, let's look. Oh, yes.
I have a question on these pension costs. This is every time we do an interim report, you pull it out. And in my experience, when the CFO pulls out some kind of chart, they want us to act on it and make some kind of changes or, or what we can do. So looking at these, what, what, what do you think we can do? Can we do something to mitigate this? Because it looks like we don't know what CalSTRS and CalPERS are going to come back with to us in the next even couple of years to say, oh, look, sorry, guys, we, we miscalculated. You know, our, our, our fund isn't, isn't performing as well. What can we do? So how do we mitigate that? What can we do as a board to make sure that this doesn't start eating up even more of our budget?
That's, thank you so much. That's a great question. We, it's really about policy at the state level. Because even though the, the accountants have said, you know what, this is your obligation, i.e. the district's obligation. We really have very little control over it as a district. And so the key is, is you're with your fellow electeds at the state legislature level, the governor's office, Department of Finance, is to say, this is a real problem. This is going to cost us, this, this is a $5 million bomb for us. And it's a, it's going to really squeeze things. So I, I think the best thing that we can have is, is your legislative advocacy and being aware. And if you are meeting with legislators, tell them, this is a big deal to us.
Got it. So there's nothing, so as I'm saying, there's nothing we can do to put some money aside to, you know, say they come back and say, hey, right now, you're giving 18% for each employee. We need you to now go up to 25, and we're like caught off guard, you know?
There, there, we could fund the pension on our own. However, the state is really kind of doing that for us with these rates. So these rates actually represent the state filling the hole. And so that's why, you know, we see them going up. And so essentially, we are filling the hole, and it would be a real burden if we filled it even more on our own, so to speak. It's a burden we're having a hard time keeping up with. So we hope the state helps.
Got it. More management on the state side.
Yeah. So, all right, so then, also, so here we are, the ending fund balance. You can see there, it's a little jagged at the end. We don't necessarily like to see the, that kind of variability, but it just is what it is when we have so many one-time revenues coming in to the district with different spending dates. We're going to see this kind of variability in the ending fund balance. But we've tried to build in a lot of flexibility so that you can do what you need to do and not encumber or commit these funds to something else. It's, it's all available to you. And then, so with that, then, we recommend a positive certification. That means that we can meet our obligations for this year and two years out. And we're seeing that the uncertainty is causing some variability. The state's exceeding its financial targets, which is good. We got pensions spiking, and we got slower out-year growth in revenue. And the expenditure growth rate is higher than the revenue growth rate right now, but we'll work on that and, and straighten that out. So with that, then, I appreciate your time.
So I know most of the questions have been asked along, or do people have any other questions? Trustee Anderson.
Yeah, I just, thank you for having the updated information. I know the, the COVID bill that just came out on Friday, AB 86. It specifically talked about the instructional support grants. But it also just shared, I think, you know, even if we do or we don't qualify, I'm not sure if that's the one that had the really fast turnaround that didn't have the stipulations. But I just thought it was important to read what it says, because I think it is our intent. It's from Part 246, Chapter 1, In-Person Instruction and Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. I think oftentimes, we are a little bit different since we don't get all of the state funding, but I think it's important for us to itemize and prioritize these as well. In Section 4352, it says, "It is the intent of the legislature that the local educational agencies offer in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible during the 2021 school year," consistent with the subdivision, blah, blah. And then it goes into next year and the following years. But to expand for this year, it includes, "Expand in-person instructional time and provide academic interventions and pupil supports to address barriers to learning and accelerate progress to close learning gaps." "The legislature strongly encourages local educational agencies to prioritize pupils who would benefit the most from in-person instruction and who have been identified as needing integrated supports or academic interventions, including, but not limited to, pupils with disabilities, youth in foster care, homeless youth, English language learners, pupils from low-income families, pupils without access to a computing device, software, and high-speed internet necessary to participate in online instruction, disengaged pupils, credit-deficient high school pupils, pupils at risk of dropping out, pupils with failing grades, and pupils identified as needing social and mental health supports." And then I just wanted to make sure that as we're planning for the, the rest of school, of the school year. I love that we're doing so much for summer, but we also have quite a lot of time left still in our school year. So additionally with that, it talks about learning recovery programs, and it talks about the five specific groups of students who are, they're called prioritized pupils. So it talks a lot about extending the instructional time for those, for those peoples, including tutoring and one-on-one small groups, using integrated pupil supports, community learning hubs. using integrated pupil supports, community learning hubs. So I just want to make sure that we're using that as a resource as we're doing or planning for the rest of spring because that just came out on Friday. And as we have to be nimble and agile with everything, I think this is really clear that that is what the state is looking for. And I think we can help provide some of that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I think it's, Mr. Trader, as you said, we always want the green line above the red line. And I know in the time I've been on the board and before that, over several years, that continued that direction. So I'm sure under your guidance that we will continue in that direction.
We will.
Thank you so much.
I moved that we approved the 2021 Second Interim Report of the district's financial status.
Have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Trustee Matoye, seconded by Trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Bailey Bogart.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu.
Yes.
Mrs. Yelsey? I just wanted to mention, we've talked a lot about our learning plans for summer and continuing on through the semester. I just want to make a note for anyone listening that this is a general ed focus. Our children with special needs have their own program and that will be elaborated on at a somewhat later time. But that's going to go on as we always have every summer. So parents of students with special needs, don't worry. This is not what you're doing, but your plan is in place also. So just wanted to make that note. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 17B, Adopt Resolution 200321, Establishing Section 115 Other Post-Employment Benefits Irrevocable Trust. Mr. Trader, we're calling you back up. There was one comment card received for 17B. So before we begin, we'll return that over to Susan Fish, who will call the speaker.
Thank you. Our speaker is Dr. Britt Doughty. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself. State your name for the meeting record and begin speaking.
Good evening, President Yelsey, members of the board and members of the community, and Mr. Lee Sung. I am Britt Doughty. I serve on the executive board with the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers as past president. And also, I'm a member of the Retirement Policy Committee with the California Federation of Teachers. And on that Retirement Policy Committee, two of the main functions that we look at is, one is paying attention to what's going on with our pension systems. And secondly, we look at what's going on with retiree benefits. And the OPEB account, as we like to call it in Newport Mesa, is one of those programs which is unique in Newport Mesa. And it is not common throughout Orange County and other places. And so this is a positive benefit that some employees have if they retire early. And Newport Mesa has had a wonderful history for more than 20 years offering this program. So I rise in support of the resolution. And I hope that the board passes this resolution. I believe that this will bring, will guarantee stability for continuity of that program. Also, I think it allows the district to have the fiscal records be shown in a more positive light. And I'm sure Mr. Trader will explain that. Some things that may be appropriate down the road to consider would be to have perhaps a regular report connected with the interim fiscal reports that goes to the board. And also, it might be appropriate for that report to be shared directly with the Joint Benefits Team, which is made up of NMFT members, CSCE members, and members of the management group who jointly work together to continue the high-quality health and welfare benefits program in Newport Mesa. So this is a very good program. We are excited that the board is taking action to support that long term.
Trader now.
So tonight, we bring to you this resolution. This has to do with, like Dr. Doughty indicated, as to our health and welfare benefits that we provide to early retirees between the ages of 55 and 65. There is an obligation associated with this benefit, and it is valued at about $119 million. And so it's fairly significant. The board in March of 2005 recognized this liability and set up a revocable fund to begin funding this kind of thing. And so then in November 2018, the board commissioned a study, an other post-employment benefits study. And the determination there out of the study was that funding this OPEB liability would reduce the liability overall and lower overall health and welfare expenses. And so we commenced a RFP process to see what the market had out there for administering this kind of a Section 115 trust. And so then, on February of 2020, the board established an OPEB fund. And this is simply the shell, the accounting with the county to be able to start accounting for something like this. And tonight, we bring to you a resolution to set up the actual Section 115 OPEB trust. And tonight, this action will set up the trust administration, the trustee, and the investment manager. And this is really also about matching the investment time horizon with the liability time horizon. So if you think about these employee, this employee benefit, it's really like a 30-year time horizon. And for us to fund it in a, how do you say, a savings account is not a good match of time horizons. And so this is going to add a positive signal to both Wall Street and to our employees that we are serious about proactively managing this liability.
Do you have any questions on this?
I just had one. Is it because we are partnering with the PARS program that those benefits are more effective? Is that why we picked that particular provider, I guess, of the trust?
So we received three responses. One from CalPERS, one from PFM, and one from PARS. And PARS was the most favorable in terms of the program itself. And it was the lowest cost.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a? The resolution is Adopt Resolution 200321, Establishing a Section 115 Other Post-Employment Benefits Irrevocable Trust. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Adopt Resolution 200321, Establishing a Section 115 Other Post-Employment Benefits Irrevocable Trust.
Second.
Who is the second?
Anderson.
Trustee Anderson. Trustee Anderson was the second.
Sorry. I'm sorry, it's hard to hear where sounds are coming from. Moved by Trustee Wagen, seconded by Trustee Anderson. Resolution, roll call vote.
Student Board Member Bailey Bogart.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu.
Yes.
Thank you. Onto Item 17C. Approve CSBA Delegate Assembly Election for 2021. I am not on it, but I will talk about this. So we have an official ballot for the Delegate Assembly, Region 15. We can vote on nine vacancies. And we had at least two members on Delegate Assembly for a while. Trustee, most recently, Trustee Matoye, who was finishing a term, and Trustee Black, who is no longer with us. So we have another nominee in our district, which is Trustee Barto. And other than Trustee Barto, the people on it are known by Trustee Matoye and other people who have worked. So I recommend that we vote for the following people. Trustee Michelle Barto, Bonnie Castry from Huntington Beach, Jackie Philbeck from Anaheim, Carrie Flanders from Brao Linda, Karen Freeman from Placentia Yorba Linda, Al Jabar from Anaheim Union, Shar Matoye from Newport Mesa, and Susie Schwartz from Saddleback Valley.
I'll second that.
Okay, I moved, and it was seconded by Trustee Matoye. Are there any comments or? Okay, roll call vote.
Do any of the trustees have any questions?
Who has a question?
I was just wondering if any of our new trustees had any questions about it.
Trustee Ersoilu, do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Bailey Bogart.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
No.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu.
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll move to Item 18, Community Input on Non-Agendized Items. Trustee Matoye, would you please read?
Reading. Speakers wishing to address the board on non-agendized items have submitted the appropriate comment card to the district website by no later than 11:00 a.m. today, Tuesday, March 9, 2021. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
Okay, we have received 11 comment cards on non-agendized items. They are, I think, 12 now. We had, there was one we thought they weren't going to be here. So we have one is unspecified. One is on the letter, two are from the letter from the superintendent. And nine are from the reopening increased in-person instruction.
One on the school calendar.
Okay, and one on the school calendar. So Susan, would you like to call those people up to Zoom?
Yes, thank you. Were the topic of the 2122 school calendar, the comment card is from Kevin, who is not in attendance. On the topic of unspecified miscellaneous, comment card is from Charlene Ashendorf, who indicated she's not present and decided to call the board directly. The third topic is the March 8, 2021 letter from the superintendent. And our first speaker is Sarah Awater. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself. State your name for the meeting record and begin speaking. Go ahead, try again.
Okay. Okay, can you hear me?
Not very well.
Okay, good evening. My name is Sarah Awater. And, sorry, I've got two devices on, and I'm trying. Okay, there. Okay, I'm so sorry. My name's Sarah Awater, and I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Pomona Elementary and also the first VP of the NMFT. Being in the middle of conference week, I was caught off guard when I read the email correspondence from the superintendent about the return to full-day instruction. The communication acknowledges the need for principals, teachers, employee associations, and the district departments to work together towards this end. But teachers were, you know, very surprised by the timing of this announcement. And we're the ones that are in the classroom every day. We've seen how much time, caution, and effort is needed to successfully implement change in the classroom during COVID. My concern is that premature communication has set the stage for teachers and employee associations to be the scapegoat should a hastily initiated plan to reopen full-time not be feasible or come to fruition. We're tired of being vilified by the media for not being open. I've been in my classroom with students since September. And believe me, I've seen firsthand the positives in reopening that were a direct result of essential discussions and negotiations between the district and NMFT and CSCE. To me, it seems the message was sent to placate a portion of the public that is, as it is their right, somewhat unsympathetic to teachers and employees in the predicament of being in the classroom and actually there during COVID. This is the same segment that's attacking us on social media, that's lumping us together with teachers who just aren't back, you know, get the teachers back. But, you know, we already are back. The same segment who are just expressing a lot of vitriol towards us right now. And I just, I want, I want more. I want you to understand that we need you and we want you to have our backs because we have been back. And we just want to not be, you know, blamed for when things don't go right or can't happen the way that the public would like if things were different. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandy Gordon. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself. State your name for the meeting record and begin speaking.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Gordon, elementary VP for NMFT. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This week is conference week with our elementary parents. Teachers have been working hard preparing to report student achievement. The untimely letter sent out yesterday regarding the possibility of opening full-time in April disrupted the target of these conferences and now focuses on something that may or may not happen. Parents were bringing this up in yesterday's conferences when teachers and principals who were working had not yet seen the email. This is not acceptable. When asked questions about it, teachers were blindsided and looked unprofessional. Where is the district's collaboration? Where is the professional courtesy? Where is the plan? This is not about should or should we not open. It's about communication and partnership that the district has with us as employees. I don't, it doesn't feel good that the district is setting the teachers' union up for being the bad guy when things fall apart. I, once again, am so disappointed in our administration for putting information out there without collaborating or talking with its employees. As Tamara said, we deserve better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next topic is the reopening increased in-person instruction. The first comment card is from Julie Smith, who does not appear to be in attendance. The following two comment cards issued, The following two comment cards issued, input from Kristen Hatfield and Janine Assure, both requested to be removed from the list. The next comment card is from John Costa, who I'm not able to locate in the list, followed by Laura Witcher, who is not in attendance. The next card is from Michelle Elvander, who is not in attendance. The next card is from Tammy Fowler. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Tammy Fowler. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I'm a Costa Mesa resident and have taught at College Park for 20 years. I would like to address the district plan to reopen to full-day instruction after spring break. We have all heard the statistics about COVID affecting low-income neighborhoods and people of color especially hard. For many communities in Costa Mesa, this is not just a statistic. This is their lived reality. Just this week, in the past two days, a student told me that his grandpa died of COVID and he went to visit his grave. A mom today told me her neighbor just died yesterday of COVID. This reality is still a present danger, especially for our vulnerable communities. Many, many students and families at my school, and I'm sure many others have had COVID or, sorry, I'm sorry, have had COVID personally and know many people that have died of COVID. The communal grief and pain among the students that I see in my classroom every day is tangible. And it is the teachers that have had to face these students day after day, teaching in extremely difficult situations and comfort these children and try to keep school a safe place for them. Although I am grateful the vaccine is available to teachers and that numbers are going down of COVID cases, the dangers of COVID are not over, especially for these communities. It is still a real and present danger, and the vaccine is not available to these families yet. So we are not out of danger. I strongly urge you to be responsible in your decisions for reopening. And we are so close, things are getting better, and we are so close to having it be so much better. Isn't it better to err on the side of caution and put the health and safeties of our families as our highest priority? Especially, we especially need to stand up for the ones that cannot speak, that don't speak, and that teachers are standing up for and interacting with every single day. Please keep safety measures in place. Again, I want students to be back full-time. This year has definitely not been ideal. But more than that, I do not want to cause potential physical lasting harm to these children that I have served for 20 years. Besides this, the logistics, as we have heard, involved in returning to full-day instruction are not light. We have changed schedules three times this year. Teachers are
That is three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anna Ackerman. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, leaders of Newport Mesa Unified School District and Community. My name is Anna Ackerman, and I am a parent of three daughters in the district. Two are in middle school and high school. I'd like to ask for you to help us understand the future specific plans for full-time in-person education for secondary students. Thank you for your communication regarding primary. The issues at hand are much larger in scale for our secondary students. Cheating, anxiety, social emotional issues, staff that is disgruntled, and students not coming to school. The lack of responsiveness to these issues is disheartening to our community of parents and students. There is a true crisis situation happening here, and the commentary of we will address this at another time is not enough. Due to my oldest daughter being greatly impacted, we had to pull her to a local private high school that has 2,500 students. I was amazed how just 15, 20 minutes away, a school of that size has in-person learning and students are thriving. And most importantly, the staff is engaging with the parents and sharing what a decline the virtual learning created for students last year. Why is this not the top agenda item on your radar? Why is there such a disconnect between your teachers, your parents, and the leadership community? What are our options for getting all of our students back on campus and collaborating? Why is our teachers' union president and all of the teachers feeling disgruntled, blindsided, by coming back and feeling not supported? Please provide some transparency to our community. And my last question, what is all the planning in coming back? Please enlighten us. Wouldn't we be in school educating our children this fall? Isn't that the job of Newport Mesa Unified School District? To quote the mission of Newport Mesa Unified School District in partnership with Costa Mesa and the Newport Beach community is to graduate students who have acquired the knowledge, the skills, the attitudes necessary to achieve significant career, educational, civic, and personal goals, which will enrich our future society. Do you feel that this has been done? Please partner with your teachers. Please open the doors to our school. This is being done all over the country and neighboring districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last comment card is from Heidi Beth, who does not appear to be present. So President Yelsey, there are no more speakers in the queue.
I was a little confused. I'm reading some comments in our chat. Is there someone named Kevin who was going to speak? That was a different?
Different Kevin, I think.
Different Kevin.
Different Kevin.
So should he speak?
No, he's not logged in.
He already did.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, thank you. We'll turn to informal reports. Mr. Lee Sung.
All right, I'll defer to my cabinet since I have my report earlier in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Jacom.
I wasn't sure which way you were gonna go.
I, I know I threw you off last meeting, so I didn't want to do that again.
I didn't want to jump up and be too excited. Good evening, board and public. I wanted to talk to you tonight about a grant that our special education department received. It's called an Alternative Dispute Resolution Grant. ADR is the acronym that gets used by it. And it's for a little over $73,000. And it's really intended to improve collaboration with our parents. And when there's disputes or questions or concerns between what the IEP has to offer or FAP has to offer. And so one of the things that we're doing is we are sending five of our site principals along with four of our special ed coordinators to a virtual ADR conference this week where they learn skills on how to, you know, ask different questions and really try and resolve issues at the lowest level possible. And we have, over the last two years, really been trying to implement more of a, of an ADR type approach in meeting with parents prior to them filing for due process or looking at that. So that's one of the uses of the money. And then the, the other thing that we are earmarking some of that money for, one of the things we find in, as we're doing some of these settlements is that parents are seeking behavior intervention options for their students and/or reading intervention options. So we're gonna buy some materials, we're gonna do some training for our staff so that we'll be able, teaching staff, so that we will be able to offer some small group or individualized instruction in that area that we're dealing with. So just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Olson.
I was tracking your eyes to see who you're going to next. Thank you for that. Yes, good evening. Just very quickly, you heard about the summer programs from Dr. Hogard and the extensive work that she is doing. And trustee Matoye, you mentioned about the ESY for our special education students. So I just wanted you to know that behind the scenes, the HR department has already started the calendar for recruitment. And so for our employees, they can start looking for those postings. Probably within the next week or so, we will see some of the certificated postings, and then the classified will start shortly thereafter. So it is all laid out. They're ready to go. We have improved our application process for our classified employees now that we're in the COVID era and we're much better at the, at the technology, and so it should go quite smoothly and quickly. So, thank you, and I want to thank our team as well. They're right on it.
Thank you. There's a lot of opportunity for extra work.
This is the year to buy that Ferrari.
That's right. Mr. Drake.
I am gonna let our summer program report stand as a report, but do just want to reiterate, I'm watching Dr. Hogard bounce from meeting to meeting with department to department. From Lance Bidnick to Shelley to all Leona's staff, just a huge group effort going on. And, and as Dr. Hogard mentioned, you know, there is a complete commitment to pull this off. So I just want to thank all the departments and Dr. Hogard for bringing this all together.
Thank you. In keeping within line, I'll turn to Dr. Baumeister.
Good evening, and just wanted to give you a quick update on athletics. I believe the last time that I was up here, we had just opened up our low-contact sports for competition, cross-country golf, swim, tennis, and track and field. Golf, swim, tennis, and track and field will begin competition either this week, next week, or the following week. On February 26th, we got new guidance from the California Department of Public Health that opened up our moderate contact sports, field hockey, baseball, softball, lacrosse, and soccer, and opened up our high-contact outdoor sports, water polo and football, along with a requirement of COVID testing for them. We just got some new guidance from the California Department of Public Health last, late last Friday that we are going through and looking at to determine when we can open up our indoor sports and what the requirements are for testing. As you know, the guidance is, is difficult and complicated sometimes. And so we've been in contact with the Orange County Department of Public Health, CIF Southern Section. Superintendent Lee Sung has been talking with other superintendents. I've been talking with my counterparts in other districts. We're all looking at, what does that documentation actually say? When can we open up and what are the requirements? So we should have that shortly. I just wanted to tell you what my Saturday was like. It was a great day. Woke up and went to Benita Park, Benita Creek, and watched the Corona del Mar Newport Harbor Battle of the Bay Cross, cross-country race. Then went over to Costa Mesa High School and watched a baseball scrimmage. Then went to Corona del Mar and watched a football scrimmage and ended my day at Estancia High School watching a couple water polo games.
Perfect day.
It, it was a wonderful day, and it was great to see kids out there, you know, being able to do things that they love. But another reason I went out is I really too wanted to go and see and make sure that they were following the guidance. And so I was very encouraged to see, I, I knew that our coaches and players would, but I wanted to see if the fans were following the guidance as well. And I was really happy to see that they were. They were all masked. They were all social distanced. I think everyone is so happy for their kids to be out there playing sports that they're really, really willing to follow kind of any guidance that we give them. But it was a great day, and everybody was following the guidance that we had laid out. And athletics in Newport Mesa is alive and well and going well.
And we have family members as spectators, correct?
Yes, the guidance is, they can have two to four immediate household members for the direct supervision. And our, our kind of caveat is depending on supervision and space. So we need to make sure that we have people that can supervise them, and there has to be enough space for those amount of people. So we will let our people know ahead of time how many they can have. And then the athletic directors are also in contact with the other teams so that they know what our requirements are. And I guess there are some other districts and some other schools that are not allowing spectators, but we feel like their spectator, their spectators are important as ours, and their kids are as important as ours. And, you know, for parents in a lot of other districts, when they're driving kids to games and not to allow them into the game, just didn't seem right or fair. And so again, we want to treat our spectators as well as we street, we treat our own people. So that's where we've landed on that.
And one other clarification, could you give about the testing for athletes? Because we had a couple questions of people thought that they had, parents thought they had to pay for that testing weekly themselves.
So the two sports they're testing right now are water polo and football. They test on a weekly basis. And the, the company bills their insurance. And if for some reason the insurance doesn't pay, or if the child doesn't have insurance, they don't get billed. So they're just taking what the insurance takes. So they will not be billing any students.
Okay, thank you.
Same thing we do with our employees, the same, the same process.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Holcomb. No report. Mr. Trader.
You know, we're getting up on, close to the Local Control Accountability Plan season right now, and that, that's a wonderful document. I'll tell you, if you get familiar with that, you'll know exactly what we're doing in terms of instruction. And we work really closely with Vanessa Galey in putting that all together, you know. And there's one change in the governor's budget this year, and that is he has proposed that, you'll remember, there's a, a target for the amount of money that we need to spend on the unduplicated pupil, the English learner, foster youth and economically disadvantaged. And there's a target amount that we're supposed to spend. There's a budgeted amount that we spend, then there's an actual amount. And we always make sure that the actual amount exceeds the target. But he's moved the goalpost to budget. So, so now we need to make sure that what we say we're gonna spend, budget, we spend that. And, and if there's any, if we don't spend our full budget, then, then we need to carry that over into the, into the new year. And so it's a minor change, but we won't, I promise you, we won't have any problem spending our budget. And it will exceed the target.
I'm so glad you brought that up. I actually, that was something else that was in the assembly bill that I forgot. There are lots of good points in there, but it said something about $1,000 for each homeless student. So if we're gonna be exceeding that, that is, I mean, even 1,000 additionally would be great. So I'm wondering, you know, if we have over 200 right now, that's 200,000. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to allocate money for that. So thank you. I, I forgot about that point.
Okay, board member reports. Is there, other than committee reports, is there anything, anybody?
I did have one that was a follow-up. There continue, I continue to hear from parents and neighbors that live around Ray that there are street races and people doing donuts literally every single night. And so I'm wondering if there's a way to bring security to do patrols again around Ray at night. There have been literally like, for the past six months, races on Pomona and on, on Meyer by Ray, but Ray particularly. I literally keep hearing that every single night, there are people in that parking lot.
A police aware of this?
That's what I was gonna say. I, I suggest that anybody who witnesses that or knows about that to call the police immediately. That's outside of our jurisdiction because, you know, we're responsible for our schools and our property. But we do communicate with our SROs and have a good partnership with our police. And we may bring that up, but that, that's what residents should do, contact the police right away.
And the ambassadors that used to be at the park?
They have been calling, but it's in our parking lot. So I just wanted to
Oh, you didn't say that.
Yes, at the beginning. They're, they're racing as well, but they're literally like, it was just on Facebook probably eight times in the past 10 days. It's in the parking lot at Ray, people doing donuts and speeding as well.
Could we notify our school resource officer as well?
So I missed what you said. So this is a report of something going on on our property and parking lot. Okay, thank you for letting us know. We'll look into that.
I misunderstood that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Ursula had a report.
Oh, trustee Ursula, I'm so sorry. I, I'm not looking at your face right here. So thank, thank you.
That's okay. I'm sorry. I just had one comment and, and consideration for the future. I just want to thank Dr. Hogard for all of her great planning for the summer programming and seeing the depth of the survey that she conducted with parents regarding summer really was inspiring. And I would love to see, as a parent frankly that is in the cloud, we just had a very brief survey completed, but I'm wondering if perhaps next month, it would be really great to have a more in-depth survey of the cloud parents as to their preference for fall. for fall regarding would they plan on being in person? Would they like to be in a cloud atmosphere? Or if available, would they prefer to have a virtual option from their own homeschool? Because that question has never actually been posed to parents, so I'm just very curious as to how the majority would feel. And one last item, I just want to thank all of the parents and community members that wanted to speak today. I noticed that a large percent of them seem to have dropped off the call and did not ultimately make their comments. I'm curious if in the future, we can have non-agenda item, public comments be very first in the meeting so that those working parents can get on, make their comment, and if they need to exit, they can. But it's very hard when comments are at the end. They don't know if it's gonna be 7 o'clock, 9 o'clock. So it's very hard, and I feel that that's perhaps why we saw so many drop off. So thank you so much.
Some questions from people who thought that we were going to read their comments. And two meetings ago, we decided that we were gonna call them up on Zoom. So I did get back to those people who have contacted me during the meeting and said that on our agenda, it says that we will call you up on Zoom. And they realized that they misread what we were doing now. So hopefully, people will get the idea that we've gone to Zoom, and they're gonna read their comments live.
And I did hear that Mrs. Fish did talk to some of our commentees, and they said that they were going, that they dropped off. They chose not to speak. Sometimes we've solved their issue, so a lot of times people don't talk, but.
Is there a way that we can possibly do both?
Pardon?
Is there a way that we can possibly offer both for, like, particularly for the unjust of this school year? Because I think people have so many things to try and remember and keep straight. And so if we're offering the possibility of both, I think that serves our community best. That would be my, if we could do both, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, we can talk about that. Okay. Thank you. Board committee reports. D-LAC from February 10th. We had three people, I think, who attended. Who's reporting? Or is anybody?
I can report, or if either of the trustees would like to report, that's fine. I really did enjoy the D-LAC meeting, and there were a lot of engaged parents. I think the most engaged, the largest number of parents that they'd ever had, and they were really excited to have the great turnout that they did. One constant that I heard from parents, in addition to wanting to have more time on campus for the secondary as well as the elementary, but a big thing was for those students who were close contacts and having to quarantine at the elementary level, they were very confused as to how best to work with their teachers and sites in order to maintain that education throughout. That was something that I heard. It was probably the large, probably out of the 100 or so people who made comments, it was quite a big group, I would say probably 30 of those were that same comment. So if we have, you know, this is gonna go on for a while, where people are gonna have to quarantine for close contact, I would imagine if we can come up with some kind of process in order to let them know how to best work with their sites, it probably is something that we take for granted, and it's just not widely communicated. So but overall, it was really great to see the level of engagement and people asking questions and parents asking how to find out about AP tests and how to contact their students, teachers, and to encourage attendance.
Trustee Barzo, did you find that they, there was an interest in coming back to school in person?
I mean, there was, I would say that the people who did speak were in, were talking about that. There was definitely some concern. It would be unfair to say that 100% of the people were needed to come back, but a lot of parents expressed concern with their high school students' disinterest and lack of attendance and how they couldn't get them to go to school. And then at the elementary, there was the concern with, it was more the concern with the transportation in terms of getting to and from school that I heard. And then, of course, like I said, the close contact. What does an elementary student do for the 10 days at their home?
Okay, next is Superintendent Student Advisory, and Trustee Crane and I were on that this past month, and it was a great session. Jonathan Willby, our Director of Risk Management, came and spoke to the students. And I won't tell you, he has a great story, a background story that he tells all the kids. And I don't want to give it out here because I think you're gonna have him come to a meeting?
Yeah, we will have him come to a future meeting.
But he really is quite interesting, and it was great for the kids because risk management, who thinks of maybe going into that field? And he really has a story of how he got into risk management. So it kind of opened the eyes of some of these kids for, hey, you never know what kind of professions are out there or why people get in them. So that was in itself fun, but they talked about supporting the health and safety messaging for their schools and how student leaders could assist with supporting these health and safety measures at each of their sites. And they came up with ideas of to keep it fresh, you know? I mean, just to make sure that the kids wear masks all the time and walk on the right side and direction without appearing like, oh, I'm in control here. How do we nicely get people to comply? And Dr. DiAgostino, who runs the meeting, also said that his department had resources if they needed help in signage or whatever they wanted to do. So it was a very productive meeting. I think the students, Superintendent Lee Sung was there as well. I think the students get a lot out of it, and he was just a great speaker. It was, it was good. Crop from February 18th, Trustee Barto.
The main thing with the crop that we talked about was approving their budget, and they are anticipating that they might have to revise their budget down a little bit. But they have some really exciting new programs. They partnered with UCI. They partnered with CHOC surgeons at CHOC for students to be able to go in and work one-on-one. And it's really exciting because they have had to really evaluate how they're going to run their program, how they're gonna do their certifications and assessments throughout all of this when you can't be in person. So it's really wonderful that between UCI and CHOC, so many, and a veterinarian's, local veterinarian's office, they have been willing to have those students come in and work alongside them. I think there, one of the partners at CHOC is a pediatric neurosurgeon, and so it's a really wonderful opportunity for a high school student to go and be able to work with them. Previously, you would be assessed by a team of, you know, staff looking at the different things that you did. And in this case, you're getting a unique opportunity to be assessed by a pediatric neurosurgeon in terms of how well you are doing and learning. And I think it's, it's really wonderful how creative they've gotten with working with, you know, working with these partners. And it's wonderful that these partners have signed on, but I just think how amazing for a high school student to be able to walk around and have that unique experience, even in these times, in a smaller atmosphere necessitated by COVID. So that was the most exciting thing that came out of that meeting.
Thank you. And then we had CTE on 2/24. Trustee Crane and I, unfortunately, we both also had another meeting we had to leave for, which was through the Orange County School Boards Association on the Brown Act. So we only got the beginning of it, but I will say that CTE is a very robust program in our district now. There were quite a few people on the Zoom meeting talking about how they're interacting this year. And I just, in the very short time before we got on the other call, I was, in addition to all the, all the programs that we already have gone in, the emergency medicine and the construction and those types of things, just some new courses that sounded really interesting to me, and I would think to a lot of kids are like robotics and artificial intelligence through the Advanced Engineering Design Program, aerospace engineering, computer-integrated manufacturing. There's just a lot going on in that area. So I encourage students throughout the district to take advantage of learning what's available in CTE because there's some great programs. So do I have any other comments? Yes?
Yes. The Newport Mesa Schools Foundation, just the grants for teachers, the deadline was on Friday, and so all the teachers submitted their grant request, and then sometime in May, those grants will be awarded. But I also just wanted to put in a plug for anyone who wanted to donate. You can go at any time and donate, and it goes directly to teachers so they can really serve students with some really creative needs. And so if you go onto NewportMesaSchoolsFoundation.com, you can donate, and you also could, you can also donate through Amazon Smile. So just wanted to share about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then also tomorrow, we have, oh, sorry, we also have the Chamber of Commerce Education meeting tomorrow at 12:00. And then the Community Alliance is next Thursday, the 18th, at 9:00 a.m. If there are any people who are part of nonprofits that want to participate, and the school facilitators will be sharing needs at schools individually. So it will be great. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for including that about Newport Mesa Schools Foundation. It's such a wonderful program. I think we'll all miss going to the dinner this year. It's really fun to sit with the teachers and see them recognized for these grants that they've applied for and received, so.
And to read about the innovative ideas and the creative things that our teachers are doing to augment what they, what they do. That's what teachers do. They get a basic core curriculum, they know how to deliver it, and then they go, but wouldn't it be fun if? And that's where all these grants come from.
Okay, so if no further comments, we will adjourn this meeting. We are going to go back into closed session following this from last Friday. So we will continue that meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion to.
Motion to recess in the closed.
To go to closed session. Okay. Moved by Trustee Barto, seconded by Trustee Crane.
And there's no report out from the closed session that we're going to?
No, that was earlier tonight.
I know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.